We have an ordinance on first reading, ordinance 021-1. It's allowing us to grant a permanent soil nail easement for the city of New Brunswick. Ordinance 021-2 is in hold. We're going into resolutions. Resolution 461, approve agenda amendments. Resolution 462, approve table from 2/1/14 to 2/14/14. Resolution 463, authorize refund for the green tax sales certificate. Resolution 464, approve amendment of resolution 121-373. The reason is to pay additional fees in the amount of $680 to Lawrence Peterman or Sergeant John Bangor in the matter of Anderson versus the city of New Brunswick from 2,652 to 3,332. Resolution 465, approve amendment to resolution 121-374. The reason is to pay additional fees in the amount of $561 to Lawrence Peterman or Sergeant John Quirk in the matter of Carroll versus the city of New Brunswick.
Madam Counsel, there was a question raised about the claim by Mr. Carroll at the last meeting. I'm looking at that particular claim. Claim notice was filed 10 years ago and nothing has happened yet. This was another one, there's really no record of it. It's about to be dismissed by the county. It's only been over. That doesn't need to be small, 10 after. It will be over.
Thank you. Resolution 466, approve amendment of resolution 121-375 to pay additional fees in the amount of $490 to Lawrence Peterman for police officer Gary York to beg in the matter of Passy Kendall versus the city of New Brunswick from 10,767.25 to 14,262.5. Resolution 467, approve amendment to resolution 121-376. The reason is to pay additional EOP fees in the amount of $795 to Lawrence Peterman for Lieutenant Michael Boladilla in the matter of Osvaldo Fernandez, Corteno Pascillas, and Jorge Granados Poya versus the city of New Brunswick from 7,123 to 7,913.50. Resolution 468, approve amendment of resolution 121-206. The reason is to pay additional EOP fees in the amount of $18,565.06 to Jill Fower L.O.P. in the matter of Neil versus Guartano from 56,152.83 to 74,717.81. Resolution 469, authorized shore services agreement of three years with Minnesota County for paint collection program from January 1st, 2014 to December 31st, 2016. Resolution 470, authorized shore services agreement, three years with Minnesota County for e-cycle collection program, the term is January 1st, 2014 to December 31st, 2016. Resolution 471, authorized shore services agreement of three years with Minnesota County for CFC recovery program, the term is from January 1st, 2014 to December 31st, 2016. Resolution 472, approve on-premise raffle being at 94 Somerset Street for St. Peters Apostles Church on April 25th, 2014. Resolution 473, approve on-premise raffle at 5050 at 94 Somerset Street, St. Peters Apostles Church on April 25th, 2014. Resolution 474, approve on-premise raffle merchandise at 94 Somerset Street for St. Peters Apostles Church on April 25th, 2014. Resolution 475, is being pulled on the request of the chief financial officer. And resolution 476, has been pulled on the request of the chief financial officer. Resolution 477, authorized purchase by the police department under state contract 8-83904 from Quality Communication Systems for the installation of equipment. This is to be wired weekly on those 9/17 to 20/10.00 target not to exceed 1,900 hours. Resolution 474, authorized application of second execution of grant agreement for 2014 to University Department of Law and Public Safety Division of Highway Traffic Safety. This is for the 2014 distracted driving crackdown. The amount is $5,000. Resolution 479, authorized application of second execution of grant agreement for 2015 to University Department of Law and Public Safety Division of Highway Traffic Safety for 2015 pedestrian safety and the amount is $15,000. Resolution 480, approve request for use of city property requested by Center for International Faculty and Student Services at Rutgers University. The location is Brooklyn Park Pavilion at Days and North area for student payment given by international student organization at Rutgers University. This is on Monday, August 25th, 2014, from 14:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Resolution 481, approve request for parking of vehicles in Brooklyn Park requested by St. Peters University Hospital for 30 parking permits and the days start from March 1st, 2014 to August 35th, 2014. It's four six months at a cost of $30 per vehicle per month. Resolution 482, approve request for use of city property requested by Tree of Life Church. The location is Brooklyn Park for a religious service on Saturday, June 21st, 2014 from 12:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Resolution 483, approve request for use of city property requested by Tree of Life Church. The location is to East Brooklyn Park for a religious service on Saturday, June 26th, 2014 from 12:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And resolution 484, approve request for use of city property requested by Tree of Life Church. The location is East Brooklyn Park for a religious service on Saturday, August 23rd, 2014 from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Resolution 485, some resolution authorizing acceptance and execution of grant agreement issued by the University Department of Environmental Protection Division of Parks and Forestry for non-net loss grant and the amount is $79,500. Resolution 486, approve request for use of city property requested by American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. The location is Brooklyn Park and Pavilion for Three Mile Walkathon on Sunday, October 5th, 2014 from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Resolution 487, approve water contract with Absolute Fire Protection Company for its engine pump repair services. This is a term of 12 months, beginning on February 20th, 2014 and ending on February 19th, 2015, not to exceed $20,000. Resolution 488, authorized tax collector to transfer over payments on several tax and utility accounts. Resolution 489, approve water contract with John Toffey Fuel Company to furnish and deliver recent fuel. This is 12 months term, beginning on February 20th, 2014 and ending on February 19th, 2015, not to exceed $205,000. Resolution 490, authorized purchase by water utility under state contract 8-77560 from Shire International Corporation for software and standard license maintenance, not to exceed $13,801.20. Resolution 491, authorized purchase by City Perps Office on the PPMs, 2014, Pennsylvania Education Purchasing Management Program for Superior Office System for One-Copper System not to exceed $21,499. Resolution 492, has been pulled on the request of the city attorney. Resolution 493, approve request for use of city property requested by Sigma Lambda Beta Tau Alpha. The location is Brooklyn Park and Pavilion for taking the photo dancing and performance on Friday, April 4th, 2014 and a rainy day, Saturday, April 5th, 2014 from 1:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Resolution 494, approve amendment of resolution 021-447. The reason is to revise original encumbrances on the 2013-2014 contract with Hatchwood MacDowell for 2013-2014 miscellaneous engineering services not to exceed 7,661.25. Resolution 497, I'm sorry, 495, approve authorization to advertise for Hamilton Street Roadway Improvement. Resolution 496, approve authorization to advertise for Sudan Street Roadway Improvements. Resolution 497, approve professional service agreement with Inobidy Data Solutions doing business as power DMS Inc. for annual maintenance host substitution fee for the police department if the term is from February 23rd, 2014 to February 27th, 2015, it's one year term, not to exceed 5,780. Resolution 498, a resolution to accept a temporary soil nail easement for Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital for Ivory Island Street. That's it with resolutions. You can leave us. At this time, please go forward.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Council Vice President Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Present.
Council President Escobar.
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirement filled out in the meeting has been complied with and satisfied with that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and come of all public means of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate voting board in the lobby of City Home in Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely the home distributor. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where worship stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
At this time, let's pause for a moment to honor those Americans and Afghans who have lost their lives in the war in Afghanistan. Thank you. This time, I'd like to send a motion to assert the events of December 20th.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes, we don't have any ordinances of second reading. We have an ordinance for discussion first reading. Ordinance 021-1 is an ordinance to grant a permanent soil nail easement for the city of New Brunswick.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, March 5th, same date to be advertised.
Second. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. Ordinance 021-2 has been on hold. It's an ordinance to authorize supplemental bargaining of the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, because of traffic schedule night time. We hold it that way. We're going into resolutions. We have resolutions 461 to resolution 498. In that, we are going resolutions 475, 476, and 492. At this time, if anyone has any questions on these specific resolutions, please come to the microphone stating name and address.
Good evening. Charles Cradell, Lewis Street, New Brunswick, number 68, N68, the Hill Wallack Payment. Why is this case keep costing the city money? How much more is it going to cost to settle this case?
I hope you'll pull up Mr. Washington.
There's cross motions tomorrow for summary judgment and that hopefully will resolve the case.
Thank you. So, the one ending in 9-0, the water utility state contract purchase of software, is this by any chance a software to keep track of maintenance at the plant?
Mr. Marash.
Yes, that is correct. It's for a computerized maintenance management software package.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, what has the system been up until now for keeping track of maintenance?
Maybe around what we've talked about with the public comments.
I think it's important before you vote on this to know what we have now and what we're switching to. What has it been until now to keep track of maintenance?
Again, Mr. Marash.
Up until now, it's just been in paper format. Work orders are generated just in paper format and kept in binders. This is going to be a more effective, efficient system of maintaining the equipment and performing predicted and preventive maintenance.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then the, it's two more, just on 95, thank you for fixing up Hamilton Street. The roadway is in terrible condition and I hope this goes forward quickly. 98, what is a temporary soil nail easement and why does Robert Wood Johnson need that?
Mr. Hamilton.
Mr. Baldwin. For the foundation, explanation for the new project from Robert Wood Johnson. It's a method of controlling the walls so that they don't collapse on the construction while they're digging to put in their footings and the foundations. Soil nails are drilled through the ground horizontally and they help hold the support, the walls that support the excavation.
So this is underground?
Underground.
Okay. And it is permanent or is it temporary?
The resolution says temporary.
So the resolution says temporary.
Yes.
And the ordinance that...
Something different.
Is permanent?
Yes.
Okay. Can I understand the difference between the ordinance and the resolution?
Right now, we're dealing with a temporary, so the temporary is just one, Mr. Baldwin just told you.
Right, but you also passed just moments ago, the permit on first reading.
We didn't pass, we just, we're going to have it for discussion at the next city council.
Right, and so that means that you intend to make it permanent? The same thing? We're talking about the same thing, right?
No.
No.
Different things?
That's why I'm telling you that it would be two different things that at the next meeting, you know, you would tell me about the permitting notice at the discussion.
Yeah, can we understand now what the difference is? Is that, why can't I know now?
Well, at this time, Mr. Cradell, you know, we already passed this, it's going to be, already passed it for discussion in March 10th. Right now, retaining the resolutions only, so can we stick to the plan?
Right, and I'm just asking a simple question that I think everybody in the room should know and be able to answer if you're going to vote on this.
He answered you, and we are not, we are not talking about that at this moment. We are talking about the resolution at hand that you asked the question, so we answered your questions. Anything else, Mr. Cradell?
Yeah, what is the difference between a temporary soil nail easement and a permanent soil nail easement?
I haven't answered that question at this time.
That's a very reasonable question, and if you can't answer that question at this time, you shouldn't vote for this. I urge you to vote yes to it. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public committee to address the council or any other resolutions? Any council members have any questions on the resolutions?
Move the resolutions.
I have not moved the resolutions 461 to 498. I will pull it again, 475, 476, and 492, and I'm abstaining for resolution 467.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. At this time, before we go into the public portion of the meeting, I just wanted to give an update on some items that were brought up at the last meeting and prior, so keep with me. There was several items that we were discussing at the last meeting that members had questions. One of them was, there was an allegation that Mr. Michael Torina was working for Coach USA at the same time that he was working, you know, at the same time he was getting paid for, at the same time that he was doing city schedule hours. We contacted Coach USA and we spoke to the management of security at the company who stated that Mr. Torina did not work at Coach USA doing city schedule hours. So, that's one. The second one, there was also a statement and we're curious and we did some research on John Nielsen and slavery, that he owned slaves. So, Mr. Bellvin, from the public library, was contacted to see if he could get, you know, some information about this. He did say that according to the census at that time in 1860, I think it was, he mentions that John Nielsen had three colored males, he had three colored females, and only one slave female between the age of 55 to 99 was listed. And that, you know, he was, he stated that from that age, it was impossible to say whether he owned the slave or was it other whites that lived in the household, if it was by three blacks that were living in the household. Mr. Bellvin then contacted Fernanda Perron at Rutgers University, who had done research, previous research for, about this, for her Church at Christ Church. And she said that in the church records, she found no evidence that John Nielsen owned any slaves and that by 1830, at that time, slaves would have been more like family servants. So in the records, there was no mention of slaves in the Nielsen family. That wasn't anything that more research can be done, but for what she found and Mr. Bellvin found, there is no record of that. Going to give an update on the water utilities, what has been taking place in the last few months. The comprehensive performance evaluation and comprehensive technical assistance progress report were posted in the city webpage. These reports will be sent to Yontown and Franklin Township. There were some recommendations in the comprehensive performance evaluation that include some improvement for continuous monitoring equipment, that integrity and that performance, increasing the number of personnel and overtime to improve maintenance response time, better supervision, communications, and training and development opportunity for staff, development of improved operating guidelines, more consistent preventive maintenance programming, and better locations for performing representative sampling. From that also, the performance limited factor that we're identifying, the CTA, which is the comprehensive technical assistance. Some of the factors that were identified include replacement of outdated and inadequate continuous monitoring equipment, hiring of additional licensed water treatment and maintenance personnel, including a new water treatment plant, for example, than a licensed treatment operator, installation of a streaming cover meter for enhanced control of coagulation acid evaporation processes, installation of new equipment for calibration of coagulant chemical feed pumps, replacement of internal coating each membrane sale, installation of an additional chlorophen test individual analyzer to provide more representative sample of water quality after all processes are completed, conducting a voluntary public employee occupational safety and health administration audit of water treatment plans, safety programs, and water procedures, and peeling and replacing the filtration models, which today, some of those improvements have been made through our capital improvement program in the city. Mr. Walton, would you like to add, would you like to say anything that you'd like to add?
No, I would just add that the version of the CPE is the, on the website, is the redacted version and the information that's redacted are plant diagrams that the DPP did not think were appropriate to release publicly, but everything else is clearly stated in the CPE. I would tell you that the CPE team from Fort Collins, Colorado, considered 50 different performance limiting factors in their review and they identified eight that they had concerns about. They put three of those concerns in the major importance category and they put five in the moderate importance category. I would be happy to answer questions that relate to administration and supervision and Mr. Marash would be happy to answer questions that are related to operations. I would point out that while the CPE team is a highly recognized and decorated group and certainly are experts in the field, I would point out one, I think glaring deficiency in the report and that's that I was not interviewed. I was the acting director for five and a half years. A good portion of the review was during the time period that I was the acting director and other than a hastily called exit conference that I was invited to, I was not interviewed. And had I been interviewed, I think I could have shared with them a lot of meaningful information that they might have drawn different conclusions on. And I'll give you an example. One of their observations, one of their major concerns was that poor performance at the plant has been in part due to historical policies that did not budget for key O and N needs. That's totally inaccurate and that's based on bad information. The city has invested $32 million in its water system over 14 years. Had someone sat down and shared that information, I don't think you could have drawn that conclusion. So anyway, long story short, I'd be happy to answer anything administratively and Frank would be happy to answer anything that's operational.
Thank you. Next, this is an update at the last meeting and previously also, Mr. Tomlinson Pittman made some allegations against some New Brunswick officers that allegedly harassed his brother while he was at police headquarters to make a report. Captain, I'm going to make a summary, but Captain Miller is here. If you want to add to what I said, I'm just going to do a summary of the findings. The follow-up was, like I said, of the allegations were conducted by Captain Miller, including watching a video of the lobby at the time that Mr. Pittman, Torrell Pittman was there. Just so people know, the lobby of police headquarters monitored by visual and audible surveillance. So, I'm summarizing why the findings, after watching the video, checking dispatch logs, including talking also to Officer Davis, who was the one who took the report for Mr. Torrell Pittman, Mr. Davis stated that Mr. Pittman's brother did not mention to him that he was approached nor harassed by any officers prior to his arrival. There was no evidence that Mr. Pittman's brother was harassed by any officers and also several attempts were made to, by the Internal Affairs Unit to contact Mr. Torrell Pittman to obtain his version of the account and he did not respond to any other calls. But if Mr. Torrell Pittman wishes to talk to the Internal Affairs Unit, they are willing to reopen the case after speaking to him. And I'm not going into the details of why Torrell Pittman was at headquarters, I just want to summarize the findings. Would you like, anybody else, Captain Miller? Thank you. There were also some questions at the last meeting about the red light camera. I believe we only have one, Easton Avenue, by St. Peters in terms of our report. And accordingly, the report, the last report shows that the right, that a right angle accidents had been reduced at that intersection, but rear end accident had increased. I guess when people realize that the light's coming, they stop and they happy more rear end accidents in that traffic light. There was also, at the last meeting, Mr. Pittman had requested, had mentioned also some allegations about police officers telling him that five officers were targeting him and so forth, and I had committed to talk to Mr. Joe Caddens that Mr. Pittman mentioned in the conversation, he talked to us. I spoke to Joe Caddens, who said that the day that he spoke to, that he approached Mr. Pittman, it was to tell him that he had spoken to Sergeant Papas about the allegations that Mr. Pittman has stated at the council meeting before regarding Mr. Papas telling him that, name of the officers that allegedly were targeting Mr. Pittman and that didn't like him. Mr. Caddens told me that, he told Mr. Pittman that what Sergeant Papas did was giving names of officers who Mr. Pittman didn't like because they gave tickets to his friends and other situations. That Sergeant Papas, according to Mr. Caddens, even, and Mr. Caddens spoke to Mr. Pittman about it, offered me to talk, you know, to talk with him and work together as a community activist that he, you know, he says that to look for solutions instead of looking for negative, negative, just look for solutions, but according to Mr. Caddens, Mr. Pittman didn't want to do that because he didn't want to be seen with the police, talking to police officers, you know, it's nice to see them. Then, the last one that I have is about the community liaison and the protocol that was placed, that was put in place to deal with complaints who have... to deal with complaints who had put a complaint in the Internal Affairs Unit from two thousand and three, I believe, to two thousand and eleven. The protocol was in place, was put in place by Mayor Caido to establish the process where these individuals who felt that they were not, that their case, the complaint was not was not given appropriate attention or action or was not processed correctly during the time of, like I mentioned, January first of twenty thirteen to October twelfth of twenty eleven, which was the time in which Sergeant Rowe was in charge of the Internal Affairs Unit, that they felt that it wasn't done correctly. So this process was established to have an independent judge do a hearing and to look at the complaints. We had heard here of one individual who did file to have the process completed, only one, that completed the process, which was Mr. Alon Chavez. At that time, he requested a hearing, he took almost a year and a half for that process to be completed. And at the last meeting, we were giving a response from the independent hearing officer, Josh Houghley. As I stated previously, when Mr. Chavez has been here, I will not make a comment or state it on the case. My interest from the beginning to all this time has been that the protocol is followed and it was the first time he was the only one who could do the process. I wanted to see how it worked. Obviously, I believe that there is no, it's not surprised that this process took too long, too long. And I think that there were some communication challenges, it took too long. And I expect from now on, I believe there's another, somebody else, I believe, did one, right?
He did one, but it's now asked to be on hold for personal reasons that I don't recall.
Okay, so I would expect that the learning experiences, you know, while we're going through the process, that we don't repeat the same mistakes or challenges that we have. So the protocol, it might be, the protocol works, you know, is there to work. It was just the execution and implementation of it when we have the big challenges. And that's my updates. I believe I covered everything that's on the updates that I made in school from the last meeting. Anybody from the council wishes to address?
I received an email from, it was Brunswick, Lumberdale. And they are having a, they've been having various events during February Black History Month and it's going to culminate on February twenty-second, which is Saturday at two P M. It will focus on the virtual enslavement of primarily African-American men by the penal system. And the discussion will be led by Dr. Cheryl Wilson after the film, who is the Director of the Office of Multicultural Student Involvement at Rutgers. It sounds like a very interesting program. It's at two P M on February twenty-second. If heaven forbid, some weather event changes it, it will be on February twenty-fifth at six thirty. But I think everybody will find it interesting to attend this event and Dr. Wilson will probably be very lively discussion.
I want to concur with that. I attended the last one two weeks ago. They didn't have it on the, it was the seventh, yeah, the weekend of the seventh. It was called Love By Any Other Name. It talked about the struggles for marriage, you know, interracial marriages in Virginia at the time. It was pretty well attended, but I think that it can be attended a little bit more, you know, because it is a lively discussion. You know, they do give chances for people to discuss the next, the issues. And this one should be pretty lively, you know, it's called Slavery By Any Other Name. And they're gonna be talking about the prison industrial complex and the penal system. Also, just like with any storm, I want to commend all the public workers and everybody. I mean, it's not perfect right now because, because of the, all the snow out there, you're gonna see potholes. You know, a lot of times people will say, I got potholes on my street. When it snows, you know, the science of it, the street expands and then when it warms up a little bit, you're gonna get those potholes. Just call in and just, I just ask everybody's patience, you know, I know some people already have been calling me. They've lost tire here, tire there, just be careful. Because some places, they've been trying to get, keep it patched up, but then some places, it's like, you know, you're gonna get those potholes. We had, I don't remember since probably ninety-six, when we had a winter like this before, where it just seems like every week it's just coming on and, you know, and then just, just keep your head up, like this Friday, expect some type of flooding. You know, I mean, let's not be surprised by it because it's gonna get warm, that snow and all that water has some place to go. And, you know, it's just, just keep your head up, you know, if you see deep water, don't just, then you just drive right through it.
Thank you. At this time, we're gonna open the public portion of the meeting. Any member of the lobby who wishes to address the council, just come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Joseph Ambidis, ten Commercial Avenue. I just recently did, in the rare, in the P S E G pipeline burst, I just wondered if you could talk a little bit about that, what's been going on? I know there was a, excuse me, there was a prior leak, a very small one apparently. I spoke with P S E G representative, said that it was unrelated, but it was in the same piping system. So I was just, what kind of contact have you had with them, what kind of work are you guys doing to make sure that this kind of, obviously doesn't happen again? But also, what are we looking at in terms of the total spillage and leaks that actually occurred? Do you have any information on that as well?
We did, yeah. Russell mentioned, I spoke to P S E G, who's the public information, we wanted to talk a little bit about. And that was one of my updates that I, yes. Well, so, P S E G, I could give you also summary Russell, and you could correct me if I say something incorrect. But P S E G said that it's abandoning that gas, that line completely.
Oh, okay.
Yes, they, those are pipelines that have been there for many, many, many years. And the project wasn't affected as much as Highland Park was, just the gas, the order and so forth. And, but they're closing that down, so that won't be any issue anymore. Anything else that I forgot?
The prior report, the Rutter Department relayed the information to, that was in November, to P S E G and then P S E G took it from there. It's their pipeline, it's a gas line.
As far as I understand, it's under, the cause of the rupture is under investigation. This is a pretty substantial one. I was just wondering in terms of kind of like the review of the similar pipeline, assuming there are other pipelines they're gonna be shifting their burden to. So have you guys gone over any kind of plans to revise or at least check on the safety of these, these additional pipelines? And I'm assuming they'll be transferring the weight of the volume to, is there anything in process?
P S E G, P S E G will keep us informed of the pipelines, or will keep us informed once they do the investigation.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Charles Cradville, Lewis Street. I want to start by thanking the council for the explanation of all the questions that came up at the last meeting and also for putting those documents on the city website. Before I get into my questions, I did want to just follow up on a great question Mr. Ambidis had asked was the amount of total gas that spilled out into the air. Does anyone know how much that was?
P S E G would be the only ones that would know, do that contact, P S E G.
Sure. I got it.
Please, excuse me, do you just have to address the questions to me? I'm using the phone. If you have another question, just come to the mic and you can talk to me. So we're gonna have that, you have these to try.
Yeah, Joseph Ambidis, thank you for that. Yeah, no, I emailed Christine Lloyd, I think is her name, Christine Lloyd of Lewis, I said, right? She said that she wasn't able to give me the average flow or volume of the pipe due to security reasons, you know, she said it was a sixteen inch pipe, but she didn't give me any specifics as to, she, the line I kept getting was no consumers were affected. And I understand that that's a lot of primary concern, but what I'm more concerned about is that they're slavied the consumers or customers as much as the environmental damage and the continued leakage of this kind of, this gas. I mean, so I understand that she can't give certain details out, but she didn't really give anything in terms of actual volume or anything. She said it was two hours before they actually stopped it, once they found out about it. So that's, that's as much as I got in terms of.
What I will say is that P S E G, they are the ones that have the answer. Do a follow-up and see if there's anything that they can tell us about that.
Okay, appreciate it.
Charles Cradville, Lewis Street. Thank you very much for that. I hope that you do follow up because this is a really important thing that happened and we want to make sure it doesn't happen again. So we need all the facts. I want to ask about a problem on my block. I noticed over the weekend, the half of the parking was taken away by the police department and cars were towed overnight. Why was this?
That's Lewis Street. And I know there was a situation with some ambulances that has a couple of.
We've had situations on different streets where there was too much snow built up. The ambulance and the fire truck's gonna get by adequately. Vehicles, you know, they stay low, can only be six inches from the curb and we understand under snow. But we did a survey of Sedan Street, Lewis Street from one end to the other. The average car was six feet from the curb, cars that were too far away. In order for the city to move the snow, were towed, so the snow could be moved and the street wider. Sedan Street specifically reduced by over half inside with all the snow, but we got it, can't fight mother nature.
Captain, maybe there was some accidents maybe with the ambulances almost?
I don't have the detail, but I heard it, it was two way, I listened to that, there was a lot of accidents.
That was the situation.
I will vouch for the fact.
I know it's hard because if there's no way that if anyone wants to park, but that's a narrow street as it is. And there still are people parking, you know, in a way that only this, that's a, that's hard.
I understand not vouch for the fact that there's a lot of ambulances that go down my street, but you can fight mother nature in one way, that's plowing the roads and plowing them fully. So that Lewis Street is a snow emergency route, so that all the cars were taken off of the street. So I don't quite understand why, why that, why we're in a situation like this now. If the roads were properly plowed and filled with, the people should be able to park on them and they could still run two cars.
That would be the best scenario, Mr. Cradville, where you know that people were loading their car, they don't remember that part of the town, so. But, you know, if everybody could do their part, it would be, you know, absolutely.
Right, and precisely because the cars are towed, they're able to plow the full side of the street, but sometimes they don't. So I'm saying, we can fight mother nature a little bit on this one, we can do a better job plowing our streets and that's what I'm asking for. I want to raise another issue about my neighborhood that's very serious. I'm very upset that it hasn't been brought up yet, the young man who was found dead in a backyard on Hartwell Street. I think this is a serious matter of community concern. Can, can we get an update on what the police are doing in this neighborhood and what they're, you know, where the investigation is?
I know that it's best on the investigation, so I don't know how much more information can Captain Miller give, but if you want to say something.
Details of the homicide itself, I can't give you any details. Your neighbor Charlie, I'm sure you've received one of the flyers. We've put out over a thousand flyers so far in English and Spanish. In addition, Rutgers University and King University, because they both have affiliation with the individual who was killed. They put out asking, knowing, so all their students ask for more information. Multiple canvases of those neighborhoods and adjacent neighborhoods. And our detectives are out there twenty-four seven, so we can get details of what's going on.
Thank you.
Okay, that's fair enough. I do want to ask though about the changes that have been made with the Title Thirty-nine jurisdiction of the Rutgers University Police. I think it is questionable why that decision was made. I don't think it was a good decision and I think we've had three students assaulted this month, if you count Mr. McCaw, who was killed. I want to know why the Rutgers Police are not welcome to do traffic enforcement in off-campus neighborhoods and why that change was made and when, why it was made and when it was made.
Captain Miller, do you have any information?
I don't have the dates, you know, off my head. I mean, their restrictions on Title Thirty-nine statutes have always been in effect. Every year, if every year, every couple of years, it's revisited to redo the math depending on properties that Rutgers builds and the way campus changes within the university, but it's always been in effect, that's how it's been, and it came up new. It's just, you know, the parameters changed as agreements made within the university.
So by parameters changed, we mean that there's less area where the Rutgers Police are welcome to do these types of enforcement?
I don't characterize, as you do, that the Rutgers Police is not welcome, but what I will do is get you more information from the police director, as much information as we can to give you the manager and why they're sticking with the child, but not the families.
Well, I will say, I've been working with a neighborhood association, a group I started, Fifth and Sixth Ward Neighborhood Association. We have meetings the last Wednesday of every month, so I know that hopefully everyone here is free. And you can come to the next meeting, this was the number one issue at our last meeting. This is very serious. People in my neighborhood are concerned and scared that they're not getting the same protection that they always have gotten. And quite frankly, I don't think there's anybody in the room that could explain to me why Rutgers Police shouldn't have the same power as a running police officer cruising down Hartwell Street where this terrible crime happened. And I, I think that in your heart, you have to find, you have to find the courage to ask the question of why this change was made. Because I, I, I won't get into them, but I've heard, I've heard rumors that this was made for a very bad reason, that it was made for an inappropriate reason. And I think in the same way that this council investigated the claims about Mr. Beltran Eman's work, it is incumbent upon the elected officials here to investigate why the changes were most recently made to the map of where Rutgers Police had the full power.
I just told you that.
Okay, I look forward to hearing the results of that investigation. I want to ask about the water system as well. It's great that the documents are up. Part of the documents, the thing that the documents told me is that the gravity filters, half the plant virtually is not functioning right now. Is that correct or has that been brought back online?
Is that it, Mr. Mariska, is that it accurate?
Yes, that is true and accurate. The gravity filters are currently being rehabilitated.
Okay, and so as, and so as a result, we've been purchasing water from another town, from East Brunswick, is that still going on?
Yes.
Okay, and how many gallons per day do we purchase from East Brunswick now?
How many gallons do we purchase?
Anywhere from four to five million gallons a day.
Right, and none of the council was aware of this?
I'll be honest, I didn't know.
Okay, I think this is a serious problem. This is why I encourage you to read the CPE. And, and it wasn't in the CPE, but it was in the CTA, which is the follow-up document that's now been posted on the internet. And this is concerning just from a cost perspective for the city. How much, you know, Mr. Lockland says he's responded to every question I asked so far and that's correct except for one. I asked, what is the total cost to the city for the problems that were under his tenure in the water utility? And so we've already bonded nearly two million dollars to fix up the water pumps. I'm at, we're now hearing that there's major changes being implemented at the water treatment plant. What is the total cost of the mistakes and the serious violations that the DEP has called us out for at our water utility, including having to buy water from other towns? What is the total cost to the taxpayers?
I don't have an answer to that and I'm not sure I characterize everything as a mistake or, you know, some things are, their useful life has come and gone and they're being replaced. I wouldn't characterize as everything a mistake and I don't, I don't have that number. I can tell you, we are not afraid to spend money. I think that's obvious by the statement I made previous, that we spent thirty-two million dollars for improvements to the system over fourteen years. Twenty-four million under the, for the five and a half years that I managed, like Mr. Cradville likes to focus on that particular period of time. So it's not a, there's never been a lack of interest in funding improvements and repairs when they were needed.
Thank you, Mr. Mariska, you would like?
And we're gonna continue to do that.
I'd just like to clarify for the council that it's not out of the ordinary for water systems, adjacent water systems, to give and take water from one another. Every water system in the state practically is interconnected with their neighboring water system. And I'd like to point out that we gave water, we have given water in the past to East Brunswick and North Brunswick when they asked us for it. It's only a portion of our plant production that we're taking from East Brunswick right now to offset the, the water that would be produced by the gravity filters. And what we're purchasing from, as far as purchased water, is offsetting the production costs that we would be spending to produce the water ourselves.
Thank you. On that, I just wanted also remind that although we tend to rely and come back to the past, which is relevant, I think that we should concentrate more of our efforts on the improvement that has been taking place and the improvements that are happening. So, because sometimes it gets, we forget those. So, because sometimes we forget those, because we get stuck on the negative stuff. So I just want to say that I thank you because of the hard work and I know the improvement that we're doing that we move forward, which is something that, to me, is as much as important as it is what happened in the past, is more relevant now of the improvements that we have been conducting. Anything else, Mr. Cradville, before we, somebody else?
Yes, I'll finish up with the water stuff, then I'll sit down. If it's okay, I'll come back and ask some more questions. So the chlorine residual monitoring location has changed. Now practically, what does that mean? Does that mean that the statistics about chlorine residual were not credible?
No, we actually, we moved the, we actually purchased an additional chlorine analyzer, so we're monitoring in two places. The original place that we were monitoring in fitted the purpose and need at the time. It was an accurate reading, it was used in calculating our contact time. Through the CPE and the CTA process, it was identified that there was a more optimal location for that. So an additional chlorine analyzer was purchased and put in that more optimal location. The original analyzer was also kept and is currently being used as a backup or a redundant analyzer to the one that I just mentioned before.
Thank you.
Well, is it true in the old location that a failure in the chlorine feed system would not be detected?
Is that accurate?
No, not at that, not at that location. Well, I don't know what you're referring to as far as the chlorine residual would decline, which the analyzer would then pick up, which then the operators would respond to.
Okay, I'm just asking a question about what I read. And so there's a system called SCADA, S-C-A-D-A, to keep track of the data of all these readings of various, you know, chemicals and stuff. And so when is the new SCADA system going to be installed? Because it's my understanding that the current one is unreliable. And so when and what is the cost of the new system?
The current system, the new system is currently being installed. The old system was state-of-the-art and was put in about seven years ago. As all computer technology, we know becomes, it doesn't take long before it becomes obsolete. And the new SCADA system is currently being installed.
And one final question about the water, and then I'll sit down. Is it true that we have an issue with manganese in the water and that we're considering switching to potassium permanganate treatment method? Is that something to be considered and can you explain what the impacts are and sort of what that means?
Potassium permanganate is a chemical that's been historically fed at the raw water pump stations. It's more for taste and odor control, it also addresses dissolved metals. We don't have a manganese problem per se, we have more of a, I would call it a taste and odor problem, which is aesthetic, which is common to surface water sources such as we have. The chemical feed equipment, the permanganate chemical feed equipment is being upgraded as part of the raw water pump station upgrades.
Thank you.
Right, and so just one follow-up. If we've done this historically, when did we stop doing that and why?
Did we ever stop doing that?
Yeah, we stopped prior to my employment here, and I don't know what the reason was, why we stopped doing it. It's not, it's not like chlorine where it's a matter of disinfection and public health, it's more for aesthetic purposes. But we are actively pursuing feeding this chemical again.
Thank you.
Is there somebody who could say why we did that? Somebody who was charged in charge of the water utility?
If we don't have that information, not at this time, we don't find that, please. Thank you.
Tormell Pittman, 291 C and E, Bozeman Grove. It's great. Well, right before I came here, I was on my grandmother's phone and helping her with a TV, a TV went out for some odd reason. And I was helping plug in her TV, right before I came here. I was telling her, I was like, Grandma, I gotta hurry up because I gotta get to the council meeting. And she said, when you go there, take it easy on him. But she's not on the internet, so she won't see if I don't take it easy on you regardless. I want to start off by paying honor and homage to my ancestor warrior, El Haji Malik Shabazz, also known as Malcolm X. His Friday, the 21st, he was assassinated in 1965, so I want to give honor to him. And I want to know, for the council, did you guys, any of you guys attend, because Black History Month is winding down, did you guys happen to, I tell you, February 22nd, you said the public library is having an event about this penal system and how it enslaves us. If all of you guys are going to attend to that, I think that'll be excellent because there is a slavery issue within the penal system. You know, it's a big money market and, you know, people are profitizing off of black men, predominantly black men. And New Brunswick has to take responsibility for it. They had a police officer by the name of Paul Schuster, who he became successful, almost a celebrity, by locking African-American who he had his hands on. So I think that you should attend the library in that event, and hopefully you'll come away with something that can give you a broader sense on what African-American men go through on a daily basis dealing with the police. But I think the police job is to grab these, us up, African-American men up, push them through the system so you can employ lawyers, judges, prosecutors, and just follow the system. Correction officers, you know, it's a big business. You know, it's like stop and where the cat? So I think that you guys should attend it, you may walk away with something. As far as you contacting Joseph Katniss and him explaining to you that the names that he gave me were the people that I don't like, how does he have the power to know that? How could he just tell me? Why does, why does he have to write on a piece of paper, people I don't like? If I don't like them, I already know. Like how did, why did he write five names on a paper and say, Tormell Pittman? Could I do that to you, Mr. Escobar? Could I write five names down, the people that you don't like? Do I have the power to do that?
What I was explaining was that those are the names that they had, you talked about those officers that they had been, that you had some challenges with.
Who did I talk to these all about?
That's what I was just...
No, wait.
This is what I was told, he asked me to investigate, I did my due diligence, I called Katniss, and this is what he said to me, that Sergeant Pappas gave the names of, names that you have mentioned in the ass of officers that you had some challenges with. Because even the 50th is two friends, or some other situations that I don't care to want, you know, to bring up at this point, it was as personal stuff. So that's what, so he went and said to you, yeah, I hope you, these are the ones that, because those are the ones that you have challenges with. That's how they account that I got.
Well, someone will tell you something, if you're doing an investigation, you should have a bipartisan stance on it. Because to me, if I did the investigation, that wouldn't have made any sense to me.
I'm not doing the investigation.
First off, wait, hold on, excuse me, please, you have to show respect, don't cut, you don't like me to cut you off.
No, I apologize, yeah, I apologize, I'm just saying that I don't want to call it an investigation.
Okay, please, let me finish. One is a lie. They don't know the officer that I don't agree with. So, I mean, I don't know where he could pull, I don't, I don't have, you know, I've never mentioned anything to Lieutenant Pappas, wherever he is. I didn't mention anything to him. And so that's a definite lie. So I think that you should look into it even more. As far as, as far as the videotape goes, I wish I could have had the opportunity to see it. You said the resolution wasn't too clear. I would like to have the opportunity to see what you guys looked at. You know, maybe, because I honestly, my brother has no reason to lie. And if that's a threat towards me, you know what I'm saying, then I think that I should definitely look into it and see what I can do to protect myself. And also, my brother shouldn't have, if he had a problem signing a complaint on another, a regular civilian, don't you think he would have a problem signing a complaint on a police officer? So you want him to go into a process that he's intimidated with?
I would suggest, Mr. Pittman, that you tell your brother to, you know, come forward and talk to, maybe he doesn't want to talk to the police for whatever reason, or talk to one of us. The video, I want to watch it just to see, because we, I don't know if civilians are able to, I don't know how to watch that. But I said, I didn't say that it was a recording, I said that the video was watched by Captain Miller, and he shows from the report that we got, he shows your brother. Not that I say, he waited, you know, he has the whole information, just that I didn't want to, maybe he wanted to talk to us later after the meeting, because I didn't want to bring up all the details. It was 40 minutes that he waited, and then he was told that there was a, officer was not available because they were out until, 40 minutes until, 30 to 40 minutes until then Officer Davis was. And again, I would suggest that your brother then comes forward with us, if he concurs to with those allegations, that is something that happened, so I would be appreciative to come forward and talk to them, tell them personally.
Can I watch the video? Because you didn't, you didn't see it.
Excuse me.
You can watch the video with your brother, involve your brother, it means if your brother comes with you, you can watch it together with him.
There you go. There you have the answer.
Okay, so if you find that, because 40 minutes to sign a complaint, if you find that there was some foul play, then we can take further steps, or you say, tell me?
If that's why, yeah.
Okay.
Based on the allegations that you said that your brother said that he was harassed by a police officer on that, on that date.
Oh, as far as what Pappas said about me not wanting to be seen with police and things of that nature, he's kind of correct, he's right. Because prior to that, there was a raid next door to my house and one of, and one of the guys that was arrested said that one of the officers explained to them that Tormell Pittman calls down to the police department complaining about guys in the street, and that never happened. So I was kind of skeptic that he invites me to a restaurant with, you know, and sit down and talk to them. And I explained to him, I said, no, because I don't know which one of you guys said that, or if you did say, possibly said that I called police. Like, you know, it's a lot, it's a lot of things, sneaky things that police officers do, that, you know, that I don't, I don't know what they, I don't know if they want to snap pictures of me being, I don't know. I just elected not to. I mean, if they wanted to sit down somewhere here publicly, I don't have a problem with that. I'm not, I'm not going to go to a restaurant and sit down with my woman. You also...
Captain Miller also has offered to talk to you, and you have sat down with him, right? Have you sat, you sat down with Captain Miller once?
I sat down, the only person that refuses to sit down with me is the man, so I mean, I sat down with everybody, but still, even in Captain Miller, I think that, I'm not, I don't think that he's effective. I don't, I don't talk about nobody behind his back. I think that he's handpicked, I don't think he has a backbone. I think that he's put in a position because he don't have a backbone, so I don't think he'll be efficient to even sit down and talk to me.
That's not fair for me to say.
That's fair, because that's my opinion.
Absolutely, that's your opinion.
Okay, that's my opinion. So that's why, you know, I don't think, I'll go through the motions, I'll go through the motions, but will anything affect it for him? I don't think so. You also mentioned, you did a little investigation on John Nielsen, and you said that, you know, the New Brunswick historian knows everything about his brother, said somebody had free colored amongst him and maybe one female slave?
According to the census records of that time, according to Belvin, that he looked at the census records, which are very limited, but they have, he does, he noted that he had one slave, he lived in the 55 to 95.
Okay.
But they couldn't determine based on those records whether she was, is they, you know, John Nielsen or other white, white people that lived in the household, or they were from a black, a black slave.
Okay. I appreciate you investigating that. And you said a person, a historian, I guess, from Rutgers, which is Rutgers University, you know, it was also founded on a slave, you know, so that's out of the moron, but I appreciate you investigating, but if, say, for instance, if I was to happen to come up with some documentation, because you're investigating and show that you have some type of concern, if there's some documentation presented that shows otherwise, what steps will you take then? Will it be...
We will look at it and see, absolutely, to see what, what it was at that time, and get the resource, you know, the research, where is it from? You have some information?
Yeah, I'll, yeah, no, because I, and if you take the steps on John Nielsen, if there's information on any other slave, I think you'd take the same approach. Because, you know, this is Black History Month, we want to rid all of that negativity. I think that, you know, me, I think I'm one of the only few that I have the heart to mention, you know, they, raw issues about slavery and African-American slaves. You know, I really, you know, my people endured a lot, you know, and I think that this holiday due to the city, they asked, did you guys have any function, no one had any function, no one went anywhere? And what my people endured in this country, with the footage, we have footage of what my people went through, to not have anything for them, to not, you guys not experience anything, you know, I think that that's a disgrace.
Well, there, there are some things going on at the border area. Captain told you that he has listed, there's one coming up, and there's some other few activities that we have on the 25th, these airborne routes, there's another one on the Tuesday that he showed us. I think that there are things going on, it's not that we haven't, that the city hasn't done, or anybody has done, it has been, programs out there.
What else did you mention? Also, I want to also look into another situation as far as Charlie Cradville mentioned that the young man that was killed recently on, I forgot the street name.
Hartwell.
Oh, yeah, and Captain Miller said, you know, you guys passed out a thousand flyers. What's the status on the killing of Andrew Jackson?
Captain Miller.
Andrew Jackson's brother? Who did that happen to?
See.
No, you asked a question. The Andrew Jackson that was addressed that two council meetings ago was not killed.
Yes, yes. So if we could just, if you could, Mr. Pittman, I've raised a question soon, if you could detail some, Mr., so Captain Miller, if you're asking a question.
I guess that was considered a joke, but what proof does Captain Miller have that he wasn't killed?
I'm not going to discuss an investigation, but he wasn't killed. I don't believe in that.
I mean, I have family...
I would add on that, Mr. Pittman, if you have information that he was killed, I would happily take it from you.
If there's, I don't, why is it...
This is the problem I have. You know, you pass out a thousand flyers to gain, gain information and, you know, for a person that just, that just was recently killed. I explained to them that most of the community knows that this man was beaten up and ultimately went to the hospital and died from internal bleeding. You know, I mean, it may be funny to some of you guys, but that's a serious situation. And to not pass out, to say that he wasn't killed, I'm not going to get into it, but Mr. Pittman, he wasn't killed, and if Mr. Pittman, do you have any information, you can give it to me. Why, I was expecting Captain Miller to say, he wasn't killed, I passed out a thousand flyers, and I found out that people came to me and found out that ultimately he wasn't killed. He didn't do that, and I want to know why. Why didn't he take the same measure that he took with the young man that recently got killed, but didn't take the same, I guess, shouldn't it be protocol for every individual?
Mr. Pittman, I think that, what, you say that he, that Jackson was killed? Captain Miller saying that he had information that he was killed? So if you said that he was killed, Captain Miller said that he wasn't, so...
And then I asked, what steps did he take to get that finding? He didn't pass, he would have told me, he didn't pass out flyers. He didn't, he didn't, he didn't solicit information to get, to find out if the person actually was beaten up and then ultimately died from internal bleeding? So I want to know, what measure did he take?
I don't have any knowledge of that investigation, Captain Miller, if you would like to say something, if you'll be calling, you know...
Okay, don't discuss any investigation here, this is not the place. As we've seen in the past, this is just another opportunity for Mr. Pittman to put stuff out and try to embarrass other people. If he has facts, give them to me and I'll be happy to address them, but he's just making accusations now.
He mentioned to you at the, at the last time that he wasn't killed, so if you ask if that, you still have that, that concern, you should have, because Captain Miller referred to the scene, and she's not there.
That's a slap in my face. I think, I, that's a slap in my face, because I got to sit here and hear him say that I'm making accusations. It's just for me making him, trying to make someone look bad. He's making himself look bad. He just bragged about how he passed out a thousand flyers for a college student, but he didn't pass out that one piece of paper for this other man. Well, now I want to know why?
You don't know the situation, it's two different situations.
And he, and this is information that he elected to bring up, but he's saying now he don't want to talk about.
Mr. Pittman.
We didn't hand out flyers, so why would I say that? We didn't hand out flyers in that case, it wasn't his...
I was going to say, that's that, you know, it's two different investigations, you don't know what information they have. It's two different things that happen, so there's no mix, both of them, and let's move forward. If you have any more information on that?
I just, like, I've been saying that what I just said is a slap in the face to him. Yeah, you allow him to say, I have no backbone and no spine.
I don't...
And I'm here every other week with rest as concerns.
I said this, you said that's my opinion, I can have my opinion. He said I grant that, and you didn't stop him, so it's the same thing.
So let's move forward, Mr. Pittman, any more questions?
I don't, and listen, before we move forward, I think you guys are downplaying the situation. We're talking about a homicide. We're talking about a person, at least look into it, he's basically saying case closed. And I don't say, nobody in this building, nobody in this room, nobody in this room got the heart to say what I say. They could huff and puff, they could look at their watch, but when I come up to this microphone, and listen, people come in here to see me give a show. And you know what? I don't know if people come in here to watch me, never seen me before, and I see people ducked down sometimes, and if you can't, I'm gonna give a show every time I come in. So whoever knew here, you won't be disappointed. But my, my, my thing is this, my thing is this, you're downplaying that what the community feels is a homicide, and you're saying move on. The, the man was beaten. The man was beaten, and his family felt like he was beaten, and you got, the captain saying, I don't think it was a homicide. He didn't say he, he passed out flyers. That's, that's a slap in the face.
Mr. Pittman, you are telling me there are allegations that, eh, about case that we have not, you know, that we have told you before. It's a different case, and you are inferring that it's the same case as before. Sergeant Miller, answered your question in the past before, and you continue to be this, eh, person that I don't know his family. Are you representing this, the family of this person? Captain Miller says that he did not die. Do you have any other information that says differently? Then talk to Captain Miller. I don't think this is the, the, the place for you to be discussing two cases that actually, that's a police matter. Talk to them first, and find out what's going on, and then if that doesn't work, maybe if you have an issue, then you might want to come and bring it here. But this is nothing that has to do with the council, with the, the things that we, that, that we have, the business that we have ahead. That's what we're trying to say. And you could grandstand, or you say that also people are here for you, show whatever. I, I, that's, I don't look at you that way, I look at you differently. And, you know, you are a person, a resident of New Brunswick who has some concerns. Sometimes you bring cases here that we have no control over, and we, you know, we listen to you and try to address it the best that we can. We don't always agree with it, and we have disagreements. But, again, you have, it's a two-way street. And then you have to, instead of going to the council, we need to come and bring all of these issues, some of the issues that you know that you could address differently. And then if that doesn't work out, then you might want to bring it here, because you didn't get the attention, or you didn't, you know, they didn't pay attention to you, or it wasn't resolved. But you bring something here for us to start giving you a solution, giving you, eh, expect for us to give you something where you have not done, you find the terms of doing, contacting the person that you need to contact. Again, this case, I don't know who Mr. Jackson is. You had mentioned it before, Sergeant Miller told you the difference, and, uh, sort of brought it up. They keep saying that he was beaten by, you know, that this person was beaten by somebody. I don't know if, you know, the police is doing the investigation, the investigation is done, that's something that they know. So you're saying, how do you know that the investigation was not done? You know, did you talk to somebody? Did you get it resolved? Did the family? Because actually, I would, the family would be the one that should be here. And talking to the police, if that's an issue that they have, a concern, they should be bringing it up to the police department if they feel that the investigation wasn't done correctly, or there was some kind of, of a challenge. So the family should be coming forward if that's the case.
Okay, alright. This is where I'm at, because, I mean, maybe we're one way ahead, but he assumed, he assumed that he wasn't killed. He said he took, he just wasn't killed, he wasn't killed. And my, why I'm adamant about this situation is because, I had a cousin, right? He was killed in the backyard on Weldon Street. He was shot about five, six times. He was at the back window talking to a person, some guys came from out the other side of another backyard, they shot him five times. He ran to the front of the house trying to get to the door, he died right on the porch on Weldon Street. His name was William Lewis. My family endured that. You know, his mother, his mother had heart complications after that, she ultimately passed, my aunt. And no one came to our family and said they're gonna pass out a thousand flyers for his death, because his murder is still unsolved. No one said that, no one passed out a, a, a piece of paper for the death of my cousin. And to sit here and hear that, and to say, for him to jump and say that, that man didn't get killed, I knew he took the same demeanor with my cousin. Was it because he was white that we're passing out flyers? Is it because Andrew Jackson was black, because William Lewis was black? Is that the reason why they didn't get flyers passed out? So I'm not talking about something I assume, I'm talking about what I know. It's not a prot, it's not standard protocol for certain individuals. I've never heard a black person with an unsolved murder have a thousand flyers getting passed out for information. That's why I say what I said. I don't come here to grandstand. So I saw a lot of, I, I make, I make, you make it, he makes it easy for me to set him up.
Uh, Mr. Pittman, uh, so maybe that, that should be your question, so I'm not talking about, you know, go, go to the point, you know, how it possibly is not.
No, I'm just as concerned about Andrew Jackson as I am about, just because he's not a blood relative don't mean I don't have, shouldn't have the same concern.
I understand that.
So now that you see that there may be, there may be, wait, now that you see that there just might be discrimination according to how white homicides take place and black homicides take place, as a councilperson, you should look and investigate that. You should look into every black homicide that's not unsolved, or that a thousand flyers passed out.
This is, um, I don't know any information about you, because you don't know what happened at that time, you didn't explain it.
Okay.
So again, I take, I, I issue, thank you for your comment. Anything else?
Yes, yes, I also want to, um, ask about the, um, zoning process if we want to talk. Because, you know, throughout the years, I've got a lot of flack about, you know, when black people wants to open, you know, it's not like this is like, it's black people, when they want to open businesses, that the city discouraged them. And, um, they tried to, uh, you know, tell them that, you know, the business won't be awful, you're not allowed to do that. But ultimately later on, someone, uh, opened a business of that magnitude, and they're able to do it of a different race. And I want to know, is the zoning process discriminative, like, is it racist? Because there's a lot of entrepreneurs in Somerset that couldn't open businesses in New Brunswick, and they had to go across Route twenty-seven Somerset, and they're doing fine. But they would have loved to open an establishment in New Brunswick, and they're saying that the zoning process is racist, and they don't really, uh, want blacks to open businesses in certain areas, definitely downtown, anywhere else, I don't know. Is it illegal to do that?
This is not the zoning board, but I will ask, uh, Mr. Patterson, I don't think that that's something that, um, they still, at least from my, to the best of my knowledge, I know that even some, eh, the city helps with the intersect fund, which is just to create, eh, eh, minority business owners to start, eh, coming up with businesses and helping them out here in the city. Again, it is not the zoning board, but, um, eh, would I explain the problem, Mr. Patterson?
Um, Captain, you're correct, we do have programs like that to assist businesses to, uh, get established in, in the, in the city. Um, Mr. Pittman brought up a reference to a business who, that maybe it's Somerset, and they've been trying to come into New Brunswick and said that they go on one side of Route twenty-seven and not the other. Frankland Township has different zoning standards on their side of Route twenty-seven than, than we do on our side. So it may be possible that the business that came in and were told that they were not a permitted use on the Brunswick side, but the particular type of business that they have. If that's the case, what they would do is then file an application for a use variance in front of the zoning board, and the zoning board would hear that, that application. Um, the department deals with applications for people of, of, of all races, all genders, all ethnicities, and so forth. If they're, uh, meet what the criteria are, they get a zoning permit. If they're not, uh, they don't get a permit, but their, uh, alternative there is to apply to the, uh, planning board or zoning board as appropriate, uh, to seek a use variance, and then those boards can, uh, review those cases.
I mean, if you feel that, if you know many businesses, I feel that would be given to the zoning board, I just, my concern.
Okay, because, yeah, there's a number of people that, you know, in African community, like, what, if a person can't open a restaurant, what they'll do is they'll sell dinners out of their house. And a lot of people got the entrepreneurial spirit to open a business, but, you know, it's illegal to sell dinners out of their house. But, you know, I found it strange that just recently, uh, someone was, uh, granted a permit to sell dinners out of their house, and I was wondering why.
Again, this is, you know, this is.
The wife of Mike Blackwell got approved from the city of New Brunswick to sell dinners out of her house, but ultimately the state, I mean, the county did not agree with that and pushed it down. But I want to know, what, how did the city get to the point of approving that person to sell dinners out of their home? Is it because Mike Blackwell works for the city? And he's a, you know, a prominent person that works in the city? Because it's not fair, I know a number of people, and it, if they, if that permit was approved, not think that everybody who would like to sell dinners out of their home should at least put in the application to get it approved to the point where they could get it passed, because no one thus far, black that ever put, put an application in to sell dinners out of their home, they don't even allow them to fill out the application. They tell them it's a waste of time. But I want to know, how does she first get allowed to fill out the application, get the application reviewed, and then get approved? And the only reason that she is not selling dinners out of her house is because the health department denied her. But the city of New Brunswick, if it was left up to them, she would be selling dinners out of her home, which no one else in the city can do.
Again, Mr. Pittman, you should go, bring that to the zoning, well, answer it to the zoning board.
No, we already started talking about it.
Again, I just, uh, I just asked Mr. Patterson just to bring you come, and again, this is not the zoning board. If that's something that the zoning board approved, that's who we need to be talking to.
You just started talking about it. Now you want to stop?
This is the zoning, this is not the zoning board, not the zoning board, and address it to the zoning board. Thank you.
I think, I think this system is racist.
Okay.
You know, I think it's, I think it's ran by white supremists, and I think it's, uh, fun, it's, it's, um, helped by blacks that are inferior of these white supremists. So I think just because you have a black face sprinkled amongst you guys, I don't think that still takes away from the white supremacy. Laughing, you would giggle, but this is my, this is my opinion, and I'm not just my opinion, I'm showing you facts, that people got denied, and all of a sudden his wife gets approved. This is a situation that, I'll leave it alone. Alright, this is where I'm gonna go with it. Charlie mentioned also that me not have a situation with police. Charlie mentioned also about, uh, Mr. Loughlin not having a, uh, what is it? A resume on file? I want to know, does he have an application? Do you have an application on file?
Want to, in, in, in?
From twenty-one years ago?
Yeah, for twenty-one years ago.
Possibly, I don't.
Possibly, there's no way you can find out.
What do you want to know my resume, that?
From, you just, uh, direct paying information here, so the question's.
Tell the same thing.
So, do you have Mr. Backfield application on file? From twenty?
I have to open my, I have to open my personal file. I suspect I do, I think that's routinely firing people, but I have to open them up and look at it.
If so, is it possible it can be reviewed?
Maybe by whom?
By, to whoever, I'm saying, uh, be me.
I think personal files is, is, they're pretty, and I don't know if that's part of the things that anybody could see.
You got offer for to make requests with. Uh, I can, I can, I can request it?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and then, alright, so, bought the request, this application reviewed, and if there was something that the city didn't agree with, what action would you take at this point?
I'm not gonna make any statement at this time, I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, I'll, I'll get to it. You know it's a setup, I'll get to it. When, when, so, what, what would it?
I have no, again, I'm not making any comments on that, because I don't know what you refer me to, I don't know what it's that you're gonna come up with, so I'm not gonna make any assumptions, so maybe it's taking all this in that.
My thing is this, you know, and, and, uh, you know, like I said, you guys make me grandstand, because it's a simple question that you can answer. Here's a simple thing that you should know off the back. You're elected official. And the majority of you guys were handpicked, but you still have an obligation to the city. And this, and this is things that are simple. Reason why I'm asking that, because if you can review one application, you can reveal, review others. And there's a situation as far as, as the police go, and I get attacked for having a residence issue. I brought this up before. There's, uh, there's a, a protocol with police that they have to be a resident for a certain amount of time before, before they can transfer over to another, uh, to another town or something. It had nothing to do with Mr. Loughlin and his application, I just wanted to know if it could be reviewed, but, on a civil service application, you have police officers that I honestly believe that, that weren't staying in New Brunswick when they found out their, when they filled out their application. So to me, that took a job from a person that's actually from New Brunswick. And there's a way that I, a way that we can find out if that person actually worked or actually lived in New Brunswick during the time that they found out, I mean, during the time they filled out their civil service application.
That's, I, I think that's the process, when they complete an application, they have to be in New Brunswick.
They have, that's the process, right?
Yeah.
This is an investigation by the department of the residency.
So that, that, that's part of the, of the department?
There's a number of.
Other than when we accept intergovernmental transfers and people hire off the, the vice list, which is an, an attempt to re-employ police officers and then lay off another time.
So what is your question, Mr. Pittman?
If, if there's officers that I feel and I know that weren't residents when they filled out the application, and I could possibly, uh, prove it, would the city assist me in that?
So that, would you be able to, is that all part of the application of, of employment of, of officers?
We can ask for a record that's applied, and see if it would be inappropriate for the city then to conduct an investigation.
That's it, that's it, that he wants to do that, and can you request that? Although, you could request those, um, yeah, you could request that.
I got a question.
That's what you want to do.
Okay, and if, like I said.
Again, I'm not gonna make any, I'm not gonna tell you one thing or the other, because I, you know, I, I'm not making any, you could do that.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, yes, my name is Danielle Moore. I live at two eleven Joyce Comer Avenue. I've been there for thirty-seven years. I don't want to get between the city, Mr. Pittman, or, uh, Captain, uh, Miller. That was four weeks ago when Andrew Jackson was buried, and that was the night of the meeting, when I came down there and I held this picture up. That was where I gave you a listing, over ten stabbings, at least four or five of them in the same exact location. Well, I said, wow, why didn't that number make it to the newspaper? And then, wow, another man gets stabbed, stabbed right in the exact position. Oh my, it made for a page. Why? Because he was from North Brunswick? Oh, believe me, you have it all on video, where I was talking about Mr. Andrew Jackson. That was where he was beat up on French Street, where he had a big, big knot on his head. He went home, ten days later, they found him dead from internal bleeding. So that's probably why it was confusing from homicide and death, due to where action wasn't taken further from, further from there. But that was the situation where he died from internal bleeding, where he got beat up on French Street. And now, uh, once again, I'm here where I've been, like I said, getting called names from, like I said, the police department, all this trouble. Who knows, maybe the city, someone has to be going around from the department saying about me, that all I do is what, go against the city? I want to show you something. Where from, from, I said, wow, I wanted to really donate this picture, it's a beautiful picture, I wanted to blow it up, of the head principal of Red Shaw School, Mary Cahill and Copeland. Wow, what a beautiful picture it is, wow, wow. You think that, what, is it for election, or that they care for our students? I, and I was listening to you said, oh my, you should expect flooding, correct, and we just have to deal with it? Please, tell, tell me who's responsible in cleaning Joyce Comer and Delavan going towards the park, Joyce Comer and Calm Stop going into the Board of Education, Joyce Comer and Hell going into the Board of Education, and Joyce Comer and Baldwin going into the Board of Education, due to where I've been talking about it so much, that's where you have four buses inside of there, where kids go to Red Shaw, they catch their bus there. But would you please just look, what, to be carried over by, by the crossing guard? You cannot even pass through city property through the park, please, just, I just, please, what, carry the kids? Please, do you see what I'm saying, which I'm gonna give you all the pictures just to show what a sorry job the city is really doing. And my concern is what I've been seeing kids falling all week. And I'm like, why I'm protesting is, believe me, I know I was injured very low, and I go, go through so much pain. I wouldn't dare want to see any of these other children go, going through this, why? Because the city is so sorry, the Board of Education is so sorry, we're not, we're going through their ice, black ice every day. This is the park I'm talking about, we're not being cleaned. Please, do, do you see this? What, with the kids walking through there?
Ms. Danielle, when did you take this picture?
Oh, it's been all, all week, and you can tell, big snow, little snow, melt, when it melts tonight, what, it's gonna be black ice. What, you have to see the kids, what, what are they gonna do, walk in the street? Force a child to get here? Oh, I went over to Red Shaw School and I showed it a picture, but do you see what I'm saying? This is the park, this is city property. You give a ticket to someone else for their property not being cleaned, but look at your property. Look at our children have to walk through here to catch the bus, and what are they doing? Falling.
So that, yeah, you, you said that, what you're saying is that the sidewalks of Joyce Comer?
From Joyce Comer and Delavan, uh, uh, to, to Calm Stop where the kids go around.
But the sidewalks of the park, just I'm talking about city property, because the other sidewalks are basically the under.
Oh, believe me, I've been here thirty-seven years, I know, I know what, what property is, I'm talking about the park. Do you see, see what I'm saying?
I'm trying to help to process, I'm trying to understand the area.
Please, do you see what I'm saying? Where, where they're carving over, and then, like I said, puddles of water that they have to keep walk, walking through. that they have to keep walk, walking through?
Miss Danielle, um, just, um, forward the picture to us, and we will find out, again, you have.
How, what, they're being trapped in, where the crossing guard cannot even go through, what, to cross the children?
Thank you for that, um, again, we will follow, I see what was the, the situation.
Please, please do do something, because like I said, I went to the Board of Education today, and come on, every morning where you keep seeing a child fall in there, what? Walking through their puddles of water, where you're saying that we have to deal with it, we just deal with it?
I don't think that, I don't think that's, that's what he meant, for wanting to.
Um, I'm just talking to the chair, what I said was, what I, what I said was, expect flooding, because these are acts, these, these are unprecedented acts, and I tell you, I teach in a school system, and every other town we're dealing with this, there's no place to put the snow right now. The snow is going to melt. You know, we can't, we can't magically, we can magically remove the snow from somewhere? We have to deal with, we have to, I have to say, exercise patience, because we know that it's coming. I never said deal with it, like, oh, tough, you've got flooding, you got flooding. My kids have to go to school also, and they, their kids, right now, there's literally no place to put the snow. We have traffic jams, I had to call an officer, I called an officer the other day, because there are traffic jams coming into the school, going out of the school, because the snow is literally making one lane out of road. And people's patience are getting flooded, people's patience are starting to get free right now, and that's what to expect. So I didn't just say deal with it, I said, we're going, it's going to happen, exercise caution when we do.
Especially when we have such an unprecedented, um, weather.
Like I, like I said, as long as I've been living.
Excuse me, Miss Danielle, um, especially with the amount of snow, I think that, um, last year we have, I think forty-one inches, and this year we're going to fifty-something inches, fifty now, that we have, so, eh, it's understandable, I hear what you're saying, Miss Danielle. I, I'm, I'm not disputing what you're saying, but, again, we'll follow, and we'll see, especially, you know, in the city property, that the sidewalk, um, wasn't clean, find out why, what was the reason, um, because obviously, you're saying, you know, the children is, is important to us, thank you.
Because one, one thing, like I said, I've been seven, thirty-seven years of, of my life, as long as I've been living here, due to where I know the, the city Department of Public Works had retirees and medical leads, where they have a lot of new, new workers that's on, and whatever, that they're not being trained the right way to clean these roads. New Brunswick has never been this dirty before, and having trouble removing snow, because that's where the owners of a couple of places up by, on Joyce Comer Avenue, by the grocery store, where they volunteer or work something out, where the snow is being dumped up into their parking lot. Vitalities, the dumping, uh, truck that's also on Joyce Comer Avenue, where they have plenty of space, where they can take and dump loads of snow up there. So what do you mean, you do not have any, any room to deal with this, it's that you don't have the right people doing it?
Okay, Miss Danielle, again, I think that, that Councilman Fleming was making a general statement, it wasn't meant for just that area. And like I said, we will look into it and find out what's the, the situation, that the sidewalk at Joyce Comer Park was empty, and we'll follow, that's, thank you for bringing that up to us.
And then, like I said, I also have pictures of today to show you what I'm saying, where, okay, yes, the ice is melting, what is it doing, turning into black ice?
Okay, thank you, Miss Danielle, we'll follow up with that.
And then, one more, one more situation I do have, that's with the house on one forty-five Joyce Comer Avenue and one ninety-seven Joyce Comer A- uh, Avenue, where the one ninety-seven that's been bank-owned for six months now, but has not been cleaning their, their sidewalk, where the bank has not been sending anyone. I'm not sure of the situation with one forty-five Joyce Comer, with tons of ice, and like I said, what, the kids going through there, ready to fall. But my proof to show you, from the time that we've been getting snow, and the day of now where you see the snow melting, is ridiculous. So please, I hope we don't wait till the last minute, due to where, you know, Friday, we're supposed to get two inches of rain, almost fifty-five, sixty degrees, to respond then, where the city could be out cleaning the drains, to let the water start flowing.
Miss Danielle, one question, before you came into, you know, to the councilment, to like, did you try calling the Public Works Department to give them this situation?
Oh, believe me, I did, I, I've been to the Public, the Public Works, I've been to Red Shaw School today, offered to talk to the principal, where I showed her these, these, after seeing, like I said, a little boy falling today, hurting his head, what, what?
So why did I call, who did you talk to, uh, the Public, uh, uh, the Public Works Department, is what did they say?
That, that's the supervisor, that's how they're saying?
Do you know his name?
I'm not gonna give any names, but you know what the workers are saying?
That's something that we need to know.
What, you're not paying any money, that, that's what they're all saying, you're not paying any money to get it cleaned?
So the supervisor is telling you that, told you that?
I, 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 I said some workers, I didn't say supervisor, I said some workers.
Yes, Miss Danielle.
Two things, can I have the picture that's on the top of your pile? And I will look at it, may I have it?
Oh, sure, you can look at all, all of them, it's over fifty-one.
No, I, I just wanted to keep this if I could. Um, I will personally look at it tomorrow, if we have not cleared our own sidewalks, that's, that's wrong of us. Um, the park superintendent was just here, um, I'm sorry he didn't listen to what you had to say. Um, his team would have been responsible for clearing that sidewalk.
And then, like I said.
And we'll look at it tomorrow, I'm looking at a sidewalk in front of Joyce Comer Park, it's clear, so I'm, I'm confused about where you think we've done a bad job.
That's what I was trying to get you, Miss Danielle, to give you an exact location, or what is that?
Where you have done a bad job, where like, wow, I'm, I'm making, where you're saying like I'm trying to make it, make it all up?
No.
No, Miss Danielle, Miss Danielle, right here, talk to me here.
Here, here, here.
Right here.
No, well, I'm, due to where he's talking to me, but.
It's right here with Joyce Comer Park. Miss Danielle, well, we're trying to figure out, that's what I was trying to ask you, exactly, they to pinpoint the location.
Not cleaning the sidewalks.
That's why, that's what we're wanting to see, that's why.
Well, like I said, I would, I would give it to you, to see. I would give the parents walking through, trying to get through.
We're gonna get to it, if the city, city property and it wasn't done, we will follow, thank you, that's why I was trying to get to the information. If the city property, if it wasn't local record, you, you said, black people will follow, thank you.
Okay, now, my, my, one question is, like I said, who's responsible in cleaning Joyce Comer, to Comstock, towards the Board of Education, Joyce Comer to Hale, to the Board of Education?
If it's city property, the city is responsible, if it's no city property, it's the, whoever owns it, there's a corner, in that corner, there's a house, that's a property owned, that is that the owner should be able to be responsible for cleaning that. If it's a city property, it's us, we are the ones.
Well, believe me, if it's city property, it's to show what a, what a terrible job was in the, from today till the, the past two weeks, to show what the city isn't paying to do anything.
Thank you, thank you, I will follow up, thank you.
Who's your chair?
Erin, what? Yes, somebody else on the floor.
Keith Jones, fifty-six, we're traveling, trying to be quick, uh, just had some, there are a lot of writers in the room today, and I, I kinda wanted to get up here a little earlier to kinda give some positive historic, uh, action that's happening in New Brunswick, though we don't have anymore in the room tonight, so, I'll get up to speak earlier next time. But I wanted to invite everybody out again, the twenty-fifth, uh, Crossroads Theater, I'm sorry, Crossroads Theater, uh, February twenty-fifth at five o'clock. Um, New Brunswick Community Food Alliance will be showing their second annual black history film, which is Urban Roots. And instead of, uh, it being, uh, focused on the history of African-Americans, it's more so where it's celebrating the lives of African-Americans. Uh, by doing so, we're, uh, showing a film based on the city of Detroit, and how they're turning their vacant lots, uh, into community gardens. And what it's doing is, is making minorities a lot healthier in the city of Detroit. Uh, they're also, um, teaching them a trade, a skill, they're starting their own businesses through these community gardens. Uh, and it's, also speaks to the work that the New Brunswick Community Food Alliance is doing here in the city of New Brunswick, doing the same thing. Uh, it's totally free to the public, uh, we have a recreation for kids, Elijah's Promise is catering, all the food is free, uh, so come out and enjoy. And after that, we have a Q and A, and the Q and A will basically, will discuss some of the, uh, this is a plug right now, so, we want everybody in the room to join New Brunswick Community Food Alliance. Uh, some of the projects that we are working on right now is a healthy corner store initiative, where we're trying to get the local bodegas to, uh, provide healthier choices to our residents. Uh, the challenges that lie there are, you have, uh, residents who don't buy healthy choices because that's, you know, not in their culture, or, you know, it's expensive, or they, they, they can't get to it, it's foreign to them. You have, on the flip side, you have corner store owners who don't sell it because they're not making any money. You know, it's a waste of their money if they sell it, and, uh, if they carry, nobody buy it. So, this is a historic, uh, project in the city of New Brunswick, I mean, it's, we're not reinventing the wheel, it happens, it happened in Philadelphia, New York, so this is something that we're bringing to the city of New Brunswick. Uh, also, where it's a collective effort, um, the city of New Brunswick now has a breakfast after the bell, uh, which is basically, uh, a hundred percent of kids eat breakfast in the city of New Brunswick after their own room. Uh, some of the challenges with our school system and the failing grades, uh, not taken into account, is the fact that kids are not eating at home, you know, some of the most, mostly, uh, or all their meals come from the, the public schools. So they get lunch, uh, and they gotta fend for themselves when they get home, and, you know, some don't eat to the next day. That's why de Blasio decided to keep the schools open in New York, because they're going through the same kinda similar situation. It's more so on the teach, on the parents to make their judgment calls, and it's, you know, their kid in the school. So, those challenges cause kids not to pay attention in class, to act out, cause teachers to have to spend two hundred to three hundred dollars a month to try to feed these kids. You have the nurse's office, that's the most populated room in the building, uh, and you just can't finish your lesson plans because they have to tend to the children that are, that haven't eaten a meal since yesterday. So, breakfast after the bell does, it allows a hundred percent of the kids in each class from the eat, including the teacher, including the aides, uh, breaks the stigma of being a child that's on assistance who has to get a free breakfast, because the kid that's not on assistance gets free breakfast. So, we were looking at having it, we thought it would be implemented in September. We got notice that it will be implemented this, I think, the second week of March, which is, you know, a couple of weeks away. And it's a major, 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 major deal for the city of New Brunswick, for our community. And what the Food Alliance plans to do with the administration, as well as a couple of other partners, is, uh, an awareness campaign for houses of worship, different organizations, communities, parents, PTO meetings, to let them know all the benefits of this initiative, and what it means to the city of New Brunswick, this is a big deal. Uh, this is what stuff, the kinda stuff I want writers and journalists to write about, the city of New Brunswick, not all of the other crap that happens, that, that goes on in every city. So, this is a big deal for the city, uh, there was some talk of, uh, I'll try to shorten it up in two minutes. Uh, people being able to sell produce out of their homes, right? Which is cool, brings up another point that the Food Alliance is doing, is a small food producer, uh, commercial kitchen project, where we're pairing up small food producers, so if you make pies out of your home, we're pairing you up with a commercial kitchen in the city of New Brunswick for no cost. You know, all you have to do is fill out a survey, that commercial kitchen fills out a survey, what type of appliance do you need, if you bake pizzas, you make pizza, you need a pizza oven, we'll pair you up with a commercial kitchen that has a pizza oven. Whatever you make, you sell, it's, it's on you, you work that out with the kitchen, um, and that's why I want people to join the Alliance. Uh, and my last thing, I'll end on, is Elijah's Promise has been having cold blues throughout the year, or without, well, throughout the winter, winter, where they're allowing people to stay in the shelter, and they don't have any place to stay, I'm sorry. So, the issue now is they've run out of male clothes. You know, they're running low on male clothing, so I'm asking anybody that has any male clothing that they're not using, coats, pants, hats, uh, whatever, socks, we need shoes. So you can drop all that stuff off at two eleven, uh, Livingston Avenue, or eighteen Nielsen Street. And on that note, I'll end, uh, I just wanted to say that, you know, on Black History Month, let's, let's not only focus on the, 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 the super negative that happened, we, we all know what happened, so, we, we, our people, uh, but we have so much to celebrate as African-Americans, so let's, you know, let's also focus on that. Uh, it's not being taught as much as it used to be, so, it's, we need to take it upon ourselves to teach our communities about all the wonderful things, you know, to, uh, for the reasons to celebrate Black History Month. With that, stay safe, stay warm, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council, once again, Charles Crandall Lewis Street, I'll try to keep it quick. Um, for starters, uh, did, did the Emergency Management Council have any meetings in twenty thirteen? Or, I should say, since January twenty thirteen?
Emergency, Director Roll.
Yes.
Can you say how many they had?
Well, I don't know if you have that information, do we have that information?
No, no.
We don't say I have that information, Mr. Crandall.
Can I ask what they were regarding?
What is, what, what is your, what is your point?
My point is that I.
So I just point to you madness, so what is your point?
Well, let's, let's be careful how we use our words, I don't think this is madness, I think I've raised an important issue about the emergency.
To your system, to your system, I apologize for your madness, to your system.
Okay, so, I, I try to be careful with my words, so.
Thank you.
The Emergency Management Council met nine times in twenty twelve, is my understanding, it was for nine consecutive days during the hurricane. And so, twenty thirteen, I'm asking, when did they have any meetings? Did they, because they don't have a regular schedule, they're not open in public, they don't keep minutes, they don't have agendas, so I just wanna know when they met, what they met about?
Twenty thirteen, we will get to that information for the next meeting, Mr. Crandall. Can you?
The next, emergency management meets for emergencies, so when there's some imminent dangers or emergencies pending, that's when we meet.
Parry, we can't cite any of these emergencies that happened in twenty thirteen that required a meeting.
We will find out, the Director Roll says that they met, we don't say they don't have many, we will find out, we don't have many, and the reason why.
Okay, great, thank you very much, uh, just regarding the other boards and commissions, I noticed there's a few that did not have any meetings in the past year.
We don't have that, we will get that information for you, we don't have that, I'll, I'll.
I, I was just pointing out there, the Minority Business Enterprise Commission, which I think would be a worthwhile effort to restart that and get members on that, uh, especially with the issues that were raised today. Um, the Cable TV Advisory Committee, I don't quite know what role they play, but they didn't have any meetings. The Human Relations Commission, which I know you, you have served on, you've been on as the president, and that this body was started in an effort to improve police-community relations, that, that body did not have any meetings in twenty thirteen. So I just wanna ask, are there any plans to revitalize, reactivate any of those boards that have not been having the, the regular public meetings that they're supposed to?
Uh, more like they have their members, they have, we'll find out for you if they have better, and, and any situation that they have dealt with, okay?
Thank you very much. Regarding the red light camera, I appreciate the response, I did want to find out, uh, whether the total number of accidents went up or down? You said one category injuries, one category decreases?
Yeah, I was just, um, given the information that the rear-ended, um, accidents increased, and the right angle accidents decreased at that location, I don't have the numbers on there.
Okay, well, I would, I hope we can get those numbers.
Do you know what we've counted there?
The, uh, the, the total accidents, before the cameras were turned on, there was thirteen accidents at an intersection. The first year, the total accident went down to eight, the second year, they went, uh, went back to thirteen, so there was no change from the pre-data. In the third year, they increased by two fifteen.
So, the number of accidents has increased at the red light camera?
Those are the ones, the rear-ended accidents, right? Most of those accidents that you have recorded, are they rear-ended accidents?
That has a total accidents, I don't have the number, like I said, that it's broken down into right angle and rear-end collision. Uh, I'd say that, that it's been to state, and they're gonna evaluate as part of the pilot program.
Whether we just work on that, so that's.
Okay, I think it would behoove the elected officials here in this city to look at whether the camera is, is making the intersection safer, or actually increasing the number of accidents, increasing the, the danger at that spot, and I think that it would be wise to, uh, shut it down and stop.
Okay.
Perhaps even advance the contract running out this year, because this is.
Thank you.
Uh, and the other point is to make sure we're in compliance with the law, because the law requires us to file these documents to the state. I asked about it last time, I know Mr. Goulden's not here anymore, but I, it didn't seem that those reports were being filed, did anybody look into that?
Well, again, we just look at the accidents and the reports that I get, uh, I will follow up, okay?
Thank you. Regarding the, uh, resolution last week to pay for the case against the police director, um, am I correct in understanding that that was a matter from ten years ago, that the council just paid the bill last week?
You're talking about Carroll versus the city of New Brunswick, the police director? That's what you're asking, Mr. Hamilton explained to you that that was an old case?
Different Carroll.
Is it?
It, it's, it's probably the same Carroll.
It's, it's, it's probably the same Carroll, but it's a different case.
Okay.
It's about to be a stipulation dismissal filed by the county's council.
Different cases, it's a different case.
Yes, because the, when the inquiry was made at the last meeting, and I went to pull the file, I saw the description there, it was totally different from the file that I talked to Mr. Pat, uh, dinner with him back tonight.
Okay, so can you, it was, um, so this one, the one that we just, um, did the resolution won't be, it's almost at the end of the, the case, it's almost over?
And on the other one, I don't, I think a notice of plain was filed, but I don't think anything was ever done.
Was ever done, okay, so.
So, forgive me, did the case take ten years, or did it take us ten years to pay the bill?
No, 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 he just said, he just said-
Forgive me, I'm, I'm really trying to learn here.
He just told you that there was one case that was ten years ago, that he doesn't think that there was anything done on that one, this is a totally different case than you're asking about, the, the ones that we did today.
If you give us the number of, of the resolution, I'll give you the date that it was filed possibly from that.
Okay, I just, call me crazy, I think the city council should know what bill, legal bills they're paying before they pay them.
He told us, we're not confused.
And I raised, I, I'm asking about the one last time, that I'm being told was ten years old, I mean, we didn't, what, what, who, who actually in the room knows what, what legal bills are being paid at these meetings?
Okay, Mr. Crandall, next.
Okay, next, uh, the, uh, project, uh, the Red Crane on Eastern Avenue, they're building a, a big building there, and they promised to build affordable housing, I wanna ask, um, when that building-
What project is that, Mr. Crandall?
The, uh, Beret Development, one thirty-five Summer Sett.
Muse, you know it.
Muse, yes, uh, my question about that is, uh, is it true that the developer reneged on their promise to build affordable housing in the past, and did that violate their abatement agreement on One Spring Street?
And I believe I know the answer to that, because I know you know it, but, but Mr. Patterson, I mean, you know that they own the same project, you're talking about, you know that project.
Talking about One Spring Street, where they, yeah.
Because you know the answer to that, but go ahead, Mr. Patterson.
Um, if the board vice had an obligation to do affordable housing in the One Spring Project, that was not through the city, that was through, uh, the state, we were not, uh, part of that, so I don't know what the, uh, exact details as to what their, their obligations were for that, uh, I don't know what was in the, uh, tax abatement, uh, agreement off the top of my head, usually that's not a term that's, uh, that's in there, uh, so I tend to lean towards that it was probably, uh, not a violation of that, but we have to look at the documents, uh, to see, but, uh, for that project, uh, if there was an obligation to affordable housing, that was, uh, through the state, either DCA or HMFA, not through the city.
And I believe that they decided not to do what they had done with that, am I correct?
Seven years later, they, they agreed to, uh, shell the putting up promise, and, and so, I was just asking, since, since it's not clear immediately, could we look into whether or not they have violated the tax abatement agreement from One Spring Street? Given the, what's come out about this developer, and their record on affordable housing, uh, it's possible if they didn't fulfill one obligation, perhaps there are other obligations they didn't fulfill, and, and-
You just have to look at the time and see if it was part of, you know, prior to or after.
Can we review the, the documents?
Who was the witness?
That would be much appreciated, um, and, and there was a press conference held, a groundbreaking ceremony held, I thought it was very strange, it didn't appear that there were any city officials there, uh, I wanted to ask, were any of the council members invited to the September twenty-third groundbreaking ceremony for this big project that, uh, there was a, a tax abatement?
Last year, September twenty?
September twenty-third, the, the big crane on Eastern Avenue.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, so if I'm working, if you're working in our, so it's not going to go now, I don't usually, so I can't tell you by now, I don't remember, we heard you, if I got any invitation or not.
Was there, okay, so was, was there any representative of the city that, that did go?
I'm not sure, what is the point, Mr. Crandall? What is the point, give me the point, because, you know, you start with these stories, I will send you, just give me the point, straightforward.
The point is, it's really strange that, that no city officials went to a groundbreaking ceremony for a, a sixteen-story building being built in New Brunswick, and in fact, there were no press, no members of the press went to this press conference, so it seems kind of strange, it seems almost like they didn't want people to know what was going on, and perhaps we could ask Mr. Patterson if he was invited, or if Mr. Marquardt, whether the mayor was invited, if, were the invitations made to the city officials?
Well, we'll find out when you put a next meeting, the city down something that, that makes it, okay?
Thank you.
Yes.
May I say that, under other circumstances, you have been criticized for accepting inappropriate invitations to events, or being invited to events where we should, were, were, um, taking advantage of our position, so I'm feeling as though, as a public servant, I can't win. Do I go to events where I'm invited, or do I not go to events where I'm invited, or am I not invited because people are concerned about creating a conflict for me? And I resent Mr. Crandall's persistence in mischaracterizing every single interaction that we, the elected officials, I, I love the word behoove, it's, it's an ancient word, and I appreciate your use of it, and also the characterization of our city employees, many of whom work very hard to give us excellent service as residents of the city of New Brunswick. So, I, you know, I really feel like we're often put in this can't-win situation, and, um, I try to attend many of the events, um, in the city of New Brunswick, and participate on the committees and commissions that I am a member of, and I know my fellow council members do that as well, and I, I didn't say this before, and I will say it again, I feel well-served by the city employees, and it, I, I feel very uncomfortable when the public thinks it's appropriate to give basically human resource evaluations of people, it's just, it's very awkward, yeah.
And I, I concur with you, but, you know, you have the public, you know, that would say it'd be, I need to be separate, the characterization is totally different of what we might be feeling.
Exactly, and just from my perspective, I'm only bringing it up because I think these are issues that need a, a public discussion, and, and so-
I'm trying to get what is the, the, you know, the, the importance of this invitation, what is, that's why I'm asking you to give me the, the straightforward, because I know you have, you know about this, I know that, that, that there's something that you wanna come up with, or maybe that you already, already, eh, addressed somehow, and you're just coming in and bringing a forth here, eh, for us to hear you, but you have, don't you know the answers, you know this already, that's why I keep pushing, give me straightforward, don't give me these scenarios that you, I know that you know, that you already know the answers, so.
Just regarding that, I, I just wanna, uh, do my best to ensure accuracy and to ensure that I, I do know, so, so sometimes I might ask questions of the same people and see if the answers match, but regarding the personnel issues, I agree to disagree with the councilwoman, but I do wanna ask for an update on, uh, Mr. Ed Orger, Mr. Mike Mahoney, both suspended without pay, are they, uh, scheduled, have their hearings been scheduled yet, or are they still?
I don't know anything to the contrariant, so we still, they, they, we haven't been advised with the contrariant.
Okay, and a couple of questions that I asked at the last meeting, Brad Burdell, when was he, when did he resign from the department?
January one, two thousand and thirteen.
Okay, can someone explain why the city announced his resignation months before that?
No, I can't.
I don't know.
I don't know what the announcement you're speaking of.
What is the, the point to this?
Well, the point is-
So we could get to, so we could get to the answer.
Well, right, well, so the city announced he was resigning in, I believe, September of twenty twelve, maybe even earlier. I'm now being told and finding out through documents that he was on the, on the payroll, on the employee roster until January first, twenty thirteen, I'm asking why that is?
Um, if you don't have to ask, I could be ready to ask, so you should have signed this, so the case will be held.
I don't know what announcement he's speaking of, it wasn't something that-
Where was the city announced?
I read it in all the major newspapers, so I, I just assumed.
They're never, they're never-
Or they're, they're just-
They're never.
You, Madam, please.
Yes, Russell.
The announcement could be made that he's going to resign, and his resignation takes effect January first of twenty thirteen.
Is that what, is that what happened?
They're not saying that it could be a scenario, it could be one-
It could be what happened, he announced he was going to resign, and that the resignation took effect on that day.
And there could be other things that happened, that maybe he was, he signed on the term, and then he decided to resign, you know, later on, so there's, there's, you know, you know, there's different scenarios, there's nothing, eh, people hiding, there's something that is not, so people go there, just don't get this notion that this is right, let's look at the, we have our newspapers that posted that, that you're looking at, and see what is that they say.
Yeah, yeah, and, and they definitely, their record contradicts the record that I was just told about, so, so I'm asking you, please, to look into this, because this man, murder of an innocent citizen in New Brunswick, and he's also guilty of perjury, according to, uh, what, what the, the judge in this, uh, Internal Affairs process.
No, what I was saying, thank, do you know what I, thank you.
So, so do you think he should be prosecuted for perjury?
I am not making any comments, I'm not, I, I said it very clearly, that I'm not making, I already made my comments, I don't have anything to say about-
Okay, well, I, I hope Mr. Shabazz comes and, and calls the city out for this, because this is really unconscionable, that he's, he's been essentially now guilty of perjury in a hangover court.
Any questions?
Yes, uh, Richard Elliott Zelinski, when and why did he leave the police department?
Resigned March thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen, in his letter of resignation to me, he did not state a reason for his resignation.
Is it true he was suspended at the time?
It is true, he was suspended without pay on February twenty-fifth of two thousand and thirteen.
Can I ask what for?
I don't, I don't have the liberty to speak to that.
You got the answer.
On the advice of-
The person, the personal matters, you know that, personal matters, things like that are, are not to be, eh, I use in my work, if something happens, you know, but it's all that, anybody, oh, here, there is a reason why, those are, those personal matters, and they have rights.
But you're not a law enforcement officer, this is not right, this is absolutely not right, and you should, you should find that answer unsatisfactory, and you should look into the answer.
Any questions?
My last question is that Arthur Anderson, when did, when, and, when did he leave the police force and why?
And, Mr. Officer Anderson, did he leave the force, when and why?
Uh, he is in the process of putting his, uh, retirement papers in, um, and, uh, I believe he is still, uh, an active employee, um, and I, in his retirement paper to me, didn't state the reason why he's leaving.
So he retired.
Is it true he was suspended for a hundred and thirty-five days?
Thank you.
We have a, you have a-
Make sure he was suspended for a hundred and thirty-five days.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council Member Fleming?
Yes.
Council Member Garland?
Yes, he was.
Council President Esteban?
Yes.